Just asked for it and I looked it up and it seemed like maybe a good thing.
It's called a meeting to order. We're all present in the sitting except for Tammy, she will be absent. She's out there on city business. Would like to introduce Colonel Gentile, he brought a security guard with him. Chief Master Sergeant Rob Johnson, thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. Yep, welcome.
Item two. At the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the rescheduled regular session agenda of May the 22nd, 2018. Rom?
I discussed everything with Gerald earlier today.
All right, anybody? Moving on to item three, present and discuss the Call Lake Project Phase Two update.
We'll start with John Wolfe. We're going to talk about financing and the financial aspects of the project.
Good evening, can everyone hear me?
You're going to have to speak into that.
Hello? Okay.
I don't get the mic is on. Just talk loudly.
I can talk loud, no problem.
Okay.
It's on, it's for the television.
It is on? Okay, you're just fine. Okay. I can't remember the last time I came in front of you in this forum to address where the city's ability is as far as financing ability to address the Call Water Project. We've had numerous discussions over the, at least the last three to four weeks as to what's available as far as the lowest interest rate mechanisms for the city of Enid. And we've learned information since our last meeting as to what programs are going to be available, what funding dollars are going to be available for the city, for the municipal authority under their, through the Water Resources Board programs. So they have two programs that actually are available for this project. They have a traditional bond loan or what's called FAP program that involves the selling of bonds that are done by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. And then those proceeds are actually then turn around and loan back to the city at a triple A interest rate. And so it's the best money, market rate you can get at that point in time when those bonds are sold. They also have a drinking water statewide revolving fund program that is a federally subsidized program. The state receives a capitalization grant every year from EPA. And those dollars are used to loan out through this revolving fund program that is about 80% of whatever the current market rate is. And so what we've looked at all along is to blend those two programs to try to get you the lowest interest rate. And we have recently, in the last few weeks, determined that the city is looking to receive at the $315 million price tag, about 70% from that subsidized program that is about today, anywhere between a 305 and a 310 fixed interest rate for 30 years.
John, what's the rest of the acronym, starting with DW, drinking water?
That's statewide revolving fund, that's what DWSRF stands for. Every state has some form of this type of program. Every state receives capitalization grants. And so this is an avenue of where we, we actually had concern as to what percentage of the actual project you would receive from that program. And so we recently learned that you should, the Oklahoma Water Resources Board has determined that they would have funding available as projected today of about $220 million for the city of Enid. And that's very significant. That would be one of the largest allocations of SRF funding in the, the largest in the program history, certainly in a single allocation in this manner. So the Board had made a determination in regards to that figure here, like I said, in the last three to four weeks. And based on that, and along with the traditional bond loan program, it appears at this point in time with rates fluctuating, they're changing every week, that the actual rates of 305 to 310 on the SRF loan program, 385, those fluctuate five basis points either direction over the last three to four weeks, have actually started coming up a little bit more here in the last week, that your debt payments, if you were to borrow 315 million with 70% drinking water, SRF, and 30% FAP, would be about 16 and 1/4 million. So that's the figure that we're looking at for 30 years, almost 30 years that you have to address. And we also have not ruled out any other type of federal funding programs that are available. There's a new program that came out in the last year and a half through EPA, through, it's the WIFI program, it's a water infrastructure program, funding program, that will also look into, our firm as your financial advisor will look at the cost benefits of every single program. This is a, WIFI is a very new program. There's only been one transaction closed so far, but we'll look at every other grant possibility or federally funded type of program that will benefit Enid economically, obviously. So, last time we met, we talked about what are the assumptions when we are asked? Can you, can?
I have a question for you, John. The 70% happens to be close to 225 million, which is the first loan. And the 30% is the balance. Is that a coincidence?
Well, what I, it's-
Or is that the way it works? Looks to me that-
No, the 30%, well, the 30%, the 70-30 is not, that's just how, the 220 million, it wasn't, looked to be a 70-30 split.
It just worked out that way?
It just worked out that way. It's fairly close to 70-30.
And the 30 is a balance of about 90.
Right. 95 million would actually come from some other program outside of the drinking water program. We do know that guaranteed you could borrow from this program at a fixed interest rate today of about 385.
Thank you.
Where has that rate gone over the last 18 months?
I would say that rates, the last 18 months probably has gone from 315 to 385.
Okay. Thank you.
Timings, market has adjusted significantly since November 16. And so timings of the essence on, when I say this is current market, so.
How long is that rate good for? Till it changes?
Till it changes. This is today's market rate. This is not a locked in rate as of today. This is what the market is today.
Correct.
I checked today's rate, it might be a 387 today. This is somewhere around a 312, but we're still generally in this range. And as I had mentioned, we had talked about, how do we pay this back? What assumptions did we take into consideration in paying this back? What's the debt going to look like? How are we going to pay this? Are we just going to go out for one loan, close 315 million at once? We're going to get into that in a couple slides, only three slides tonight. In regards to assumptions with this particular project, we do have a one cent sales tax that goes specifically for this project through 2052, I believe is when the sales tax expires. So that generates today, that's actually sales tax and use tax that is committed to this project. And that generates about $8.7 million a year, 8.6, 8.7. So when you think of, how do we pay for this? This is a mammoth project, a very important, one of the more important projects for Enid in its history. How do we afford 16 and 1/4 million? Well, eight, eight and 3/4.
That's a year, and that's 1.3, 3.5 million a month.
Yeah, I mean, that's significant, significant impact when you're addressing 315 million. And so as you look at that, you know, the decisions were made over a year and a half ago, it's about a year and a half since we had the election, if I recall correctly, time flies by, to address out of that 16 and 1/4. And that 16 and 1/4, depending on we take the loans out, that could be 17, it could be 15 and 3/4. More likely, it's going to be closer to going up than it going down based on where interest rates have gone. We were at a U.S. historical low for seven years, going back over 100 years. We're still in a low interest rate area, if you look at the last 50 years, but rates have come back, have come up. They're not back to where they were 10 years ago. They're not even close to the average over the last 50, but rates have started to come back up. This is a project that is, I'm asked every day, maybe not every day recently, can we afford this? And there are two caveats. You can if interest rates stay where they're at. If we lock those rates in, there'll be fixed interest rates, those won't change for the 30-year program. So if we can lock that in, we have that certain. If we get out and we get the projects constructed in a reasonable amount of time, we do those in today's construction cost, with today's construction costs. That's how everything's affordable. But we looked at the revenue side, so one cent is eight and 3/4, 8.75 million. We're a little over halfway there of affording 16 and 1/4 million as we look at now. So the other half were rate adjustments that were taken, that went into effect, starting, what, three years ago, maybe four years ago? I can't remember if it's exactly. But the rates have been, were approved each January 1st, those rates are just, those actual dollars to be generated off those increase would make up the balance. So the decisions were made three to four years ago, a year and a half ago with the sales tax, to try to afford this project. How can we get there? How can we reduce the onus on our taxpayers, our citizens as much as possible, but address the water needs for Enid for the next 30 to 50 years? So we have, the last time we spoke, we looked at some very conservative assumptions. Since that point in time, we've created a model for staff to look at, well, what if we are not so conservative? What if we assume a little larger annual growth in our sales tax collections? How does that help us better for this project? Obviously, anything over the conservative estimate that we put into our analysis, which is grow at 1% a year, would help bring in more dollars, put the city in a better position to make those debt payments while at the same time accomplish the operating needs of the city and the other capital needs of the city outside of this project. But we provided a model to staff. We also looked at consumption history. Where has the customers of the city of Enid, residential, commercial, industrial, where have they been? What's their history? What's the trend been for the city of Enid and those customers that you serve outside of the city of Enid? And in what direction are we going? If we're going to lay a line from Call Lake all the way to Enid, what other additional type of growth will we have, or what will be spun off of connections to that line or servicing other regional entities that may need water, not, maybe not in the next five years, but the next 15 to 20 years? So we looked at what's historically been the trend, but if we look at the more current history, is that history of consumption by those customers satisfactory to cover the debt that we just talked about? Do we, can we move forward and not have to rely and assume that we're going to have an expected amount of growth within those two, those different customer groups? Do we feel comfortable that that will, that additional revenues will only solidify your ability to address this project, but more importantly, address other projects? And as I stated, I provided to staff a model to let them look at different assumptions. What if water, what if water consumption went up? If it went up a certain percentage? Or what if sales tax collections grew at greater than 1% annually? How does that, how does that help the situation? We addressed that over the last three weeks and staff has, and I could let the city manager certainly address that, but at least they have a comfort level as to what variables will work or make this, make this situation or this project more affordable or as we go forward. Expense assumptions, I can't remember the last time I was here, I don't know if we were showing 7 million at the last meeting, but the staff, our firm, have worked over the last three to four weeks determining what are the needs of the city as far as operational costs outside of the utilities department, outside of water? And what are this, what's a good number going forward annually that you will need to have available from all your revenues generated, either sales tax or utility-based, fee-based, so forth? If we're saying we can afford this program, what are we doing to afford the operational costs and existing debt that we already have? We have determined that as long as we can assume in a 30-year projection scenario, which a lot can happen in 30 years, but if we can have somewhere in that $10 million range, then that's based on where we're at today. That's a figure that staff feels comfortable with going forward to have available for your other needs and looking at your current capital planning and what 10 million will generate for the next 30 years. So, any questions in regards to this?
When you talked about the sale tax collections, with that assumption, do you, does that include the possibility of us selling water to outside communities or is just this, the annual income for Enid alone?
Now, this includes existing, any existing contracts, any existing customers under your rate structure, just existing. Does not include, does not include the sale of water to water districts, other communities, new customers, new districts, or selling more water than maybe you had sold in the past. Does not include any of that. Like I said, we did create a model to show if you were to grow your consumption base that the returns exponentially could be tremendous. If you were to increase 3% to 4% to 5% annually, your actual volume that you sell to customers outside of Enid, then it certainly puts you in a position to accomplish two things. One, obviously have the water needs for your community for 40 to 50 years, 30 to 40, 50 years, but also at the same time be able to meet other needs of the city. This is a, I cannot understand, state this, and I don't think anyone in the room certainly doesn't think this way, but this is the most significant project to address a resource for a community, for the community of your size ever in the state's history. You're making, this is a, the enterprise that you're, this is an enterprise, water is an enterprise. And you're addressing, you're thinking for the future, for this community and for this area, this region. And yet with all of that, the question would be asked, well, we're doing this project, we're addressing the future needs of the area of Enid and Enid proper, but you don't, you don't show anything as far as additional revenues. I believe if we can achieve a, or if we can provide a projection that shows that you can afford this, and any increases that you have in consumption from those different types of new customers will only help you in addressing your other needs of this community going forward and.
John, we have seven or eight water districts, municipalities that we sell to. How do we prohibit them from selling it on down to someone else after they buy it from us?
Contractually, I think is how we'd handle that. Are you talking about?
Well, yeah, that would be, that would be a contract basis.
Some of those folks do have entities that they in turn sell water to, or potentially sell water to, but we control.
Why would we care? If we've got it priced right.
Yeah, I believe they're paying the same price as-
They'd be making money off of more money off of rates.
Well, I think it's all, all that is a little bit, I mean, it's all well and good if we can sell water to other parties, but we're still just nibbling around the edges. I mean, growth in that part of our revenue is never going to make up more than a relatively small fraction of this debt service. I mean, unless it, I mean, unless we're growing, you know, 10% year over year for 30 years, but that's not going to happen. I mean, we can, we might grow 8% year over year, or, you know, a couple percent growth this year, a few percent growth the next, but it's not ever going to be a big chunk of this debt service. I mean, the non-Enid residents and non-Coke sales.
Which goes to what John's saying, he hasn't included any of that stuff.
Yeah. I mean, that even if it was, it's still just around the margin.
That's why we address it that way and we didn't, some of the more detailed information, but just, these are loans that are going to be at today's market rate. Both these loans will more likely have the ability for you to take these loans out in 10 years. Now, are you going to have the resources to take these loans out in 10 years? No. But you may have the ability in 20 years to take these out. You do not know what those revenues are going to be 20 years from now.
Yeah, nice problem to have.
Yeah. And I don't know if I'll be up here talking about it 20 years from now, but that-
John, all these loan programs, are these, when we borrow the money, is it in the form of a letter of credit or something that?
Well, let's address those real quick. The, the DWSRF, the drinking water statewide revolving fund program, actually is a line of, it basically is a construction loan. If any of you are familiar with a construction loan, you only pay interest on what you draw down until the project's complete. Once you complete the project, you amortize the loan. Anybody's ever had a construction loan, it works the same way, just a lot more zeros involved. So during that part, during that time that you are constructing the various projects, however you're using the proceeds of those loans, you're not paying interest, you're not, you don't draw the money down at closing, so you do have interest savings. You only pay interest on what you draw down as opposed to the other bond loan program or FAP is Financial Assistance Program. That, all those dollars, it's just as if you went to issue your, excuse me, issue your own bonds, or if you were to go to a bank, in most cases, you get all those dollars upfront. So you start paying interest on those dollars immediately. So what we try to do is to structure those two different type of loans to make the most sense, to be efficient as we can and not to pull down dollars on the bond loan program way early than when you need it. But what we're, what we're always balancing is locking in an interest rate against having money too early. And so you have to, and it's, part of that is just guesstimation, is where you think rates are going to be, so.
What's, do either of those loans have an obligation to spend it within X months?
The actual, the top program, the bond loan program, that actually requires that you, there's, it's kind of a three-part requirement. You have to enter into an actual contract or obligate, the authority has to obligate itself for a 5%. So let's say we're talking, let's, we're looking at 95 million, let's do 100 million so it's easier math, that basically $5 million would have to be obligated within six months if you have a contract. You have to have the dollars, 85% of all the dollars out the door expended, checks cut within three years. You have to proceed expeditiously to get the project done, period. And so that's that three-part test. You do not have that with the program that you're going to be borrowing most of the money from. You do not have a spend-out requirement, that is, the prior requirement is a tax law requirement, federal tax law. You do have, in your loans with the Water Resources Board, you will provide a construction estimation period of when you think you're going to finish construction. And they, they look at every single loan and try to gauge which program, which projects will be complete when, and so they can structure their cash flows because they're loaning out hundreds of millions of dollars. And you're one piece of the pie, you're a big piece of this pie. So, but that's, those are, those two programs work.
Tell me again, is that 385 fixed for 30 years? Am I looking at that?
Yes, that, well, that, if we were to close it today, today's market, it would be fixed for 30 years. The bond loan program, what this is, it's, it's, it's not like a, most of you think of your mortgage, you're paying one interest rate for the 15, 30 years you have your mortgage. Bonds are sold in series, so each actual, if you were to look at 100 million and you were to do 300 million a year for 30 years, or 3 million a year for 30 years to equal 90 million, each one of those maturities has a different interest rate. The longer you go out, the higher the interest rate, the more the risk. But when you average out all of those different interest rates over time, today it's a 385. I should say Finance 101 up here, but I. The, like I said, here are the actual goals that we have to address on the expense side. We go in, look into more detail. This is a current preliminary plan, it's a little fuzzy, I apologize. I have hard copies if anybody wants to take. This is a preliminary schedule of the projects in different, broken up into different pieces from the continued engineering, construction management, and then the individual projects themselves, easement acquisition, payment to the U.S., the Corps of Engineers for the storage rights at Call Lake, intake structure at the lake to pull the water out of the lake, water treatment plant construction, pipeline, 70 miles of line approximately. So as we look at 70 miles of line, this is preliminary, this is today, but we're looking at multiple segments. And those segments are at different dollar amounts with different projected, this is a schedule that's a couple months old. This actually showed, starting July of 18, this will be pushed obviously a little bit, but this is when each project will be done. These are the dollar amounts associated with each project. And then this, what we'll spend the next weeks, based on the direction from the governing body, is to match up which projects fit best under which program. The drinking water program, as I had stated before, is a federally subsidized program. You get federal dollars. As you know, with federal dollars, you have cross-cutting, you have strings. And you have to comply with certain provisions, you don't if you were to go out and borrow money from the general market or through the, like the bond loan program, the 95 million piece. And so when you look at drinking water, there are three main things you have to address. As far as the projects have to, you have to address any environmental impact that you have on those areas. You have engaged your engineer to provide an engineering, a EID or environmental document on all of the projects. You also have certain provisions such as Davis Bacon Prevailing Wage Act, where you have to pay federal prevailing wages for that region, for those services that are performed within each one of those construction projects. And you also have, there's a provision that came out with the stimulus package of years back that required that if you are purchasing steel, iron and steel, and it's not as simple as just all iron and steel, there's certain nuances, but you buy American steel, you don't, if you buy, if you use this program, you have to- But you buy American steel, you don't, if you buy, if you use this program, you have to go through a US company. And I think a lot of you, if not most of you, are aware that a large amount of steel is provided by China, by Canada. And so that's additional costs in a lot of circumstances, so.
In this, do we have a way to where we can eliminate inflation on the price of materials? You know, like on a loan that's locked in maybe, it won't be revolving, so it'd be set at 3.85 on the economic side of it. But as far as the material side of it, with us doing this type of project, will we be able to go to the companies that we're buying the material from to eliminate or minimize inflation?
Good question.
Good question, good suggestion, yeah.
Yes, there are opportunities to do that. We've, we've talked about a few of them within the team. One of the obvious ones is pre-purchase the steel or pre-purchase the pipe, once we get to that point. Another one that we've looked at is there are a number of common elements across the 70-mile pipeline and through the infrastructure valves, for instance. You acquire all those at the same time and get that locked in.
Some of us have lived through 16% inflation. A lot have not.
Did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, because I just don't want to see us, just look at it from, you know, a percentage rate on the dollar that we borrow, but let's be realistic and realize that we do deal with inflation. And I don't want us to get caught by the hills that way and end up drowning. So, big concern.
Chris, I have a question. Is segment eight right next to Enid, next to the water treatment plant, or is that in Ponce City?
Which way did we run those? That was, that's the Enid Inn. Segment one is over at the intake.
Right next to the water treatment plant.
That runs from the water treatment plant halfway through Garfield County.
Well, what we were talking about a little while ago was the requirement to spend certain amounts of money by certain timeframes and all of that. I think pre-buying steel, pre-buying valves probably helps us expend some of those resources by the timeframe required.
Oh, absolutely. And, and when you look at the, the way we've broken out these projects and construction is supposed to be complete within two years, I think we can make that.
Takes longer than that to widen.
This will too.
It takes longer than that to get there.
This will too.
Yeah, I just reiterate what John said, what we all know, this is the biggest project the city's ever taken on, one of the biggest in state history. And so, so it's a difficult project. If it was simple, it'd already be done. It needs to be done. And so we're continuing to forge on, but you've got more to talk about tonight, so Engineering's got a little piece too.
Actually, if anyone, let me see if I want to cover a couple areas here. As you can see, these are allocations based on what we know today. These pieces may move to a certain degree, but all of this adds up to dollars borrowed under each program, which translate back, translates back to the 16 and a quarter million you see at the bottom. So as you sit and ponder, maybe not at all, but you wonder, how do you handle $315 million? How do we, how do we pay for that? Mayor brought it up, 13, you know, million and three a month for 30 years. It's, it's a large undertaking, but that's the cost of water, water guaranteed for those many years. And that translates into a rate structure. And a rate structure that assuming everyone uses the same amount of water that they've been using, makes this, this is an affordable project. All right, I doubt if everyone can read this. I know I can. But what this addresses is what was asked last time, which is, we have a lot of variables that we were very conservative on, no growth in consumption, no more than a 1% growth in sales tax. But we also talked last time about certain debt falling off that we did not contemplate. And you have over $3 million in debt, approximately $3 million in debt that will fall off. 30 years of time, that's a long time. But when we look at, okay, we address our operational costs, we, we address our existing debt payments, we address, you know, we have capital needs, and that's get, you know, around $10 million a year, that's what that actually shows here, that's our target, 10 million. What's the chance of us getting there? And what does it look like for the next 30 years? So what we've addressed here is with debt falling off, very conservative, almost no growth. Anything above that will be the financial term gravy, and the red line is 10 million. And existing utility revenues based on current consumption levels gets you almost to 10. And in two, and this is on 2021, when the financing should all be completed. The projects, all the projects will be fairly close to being complete, if not complete. So what does it look like after 2021? You have al- almost 10 and a half million for the next eight to nine years. And then when your debt pays off for your wastewater treatment plant, that's 2.3 million, that's what this is, that falls off. So you have those dollars available to fund capital projects. Good point, I think Mr. Razzell brought this up, these are today's dollars. These are not, not, no escalation into whatever you could do 13 years from now is you, you're at this level. And whatever those projects cost at that point in time, we don't know what inflation's going to be, we don't know what projects you're talking about. So as you know, cost of living is, is composed of a lot of various resources that may go up at a greater percentage annually than others. And so this was the picture that was requested last time. What happens if we do have debt fall off? And how are we able to accomplish that based on information that are, that we provided by your finance staff, operational costs, so forth? This is the best picture we can show for the next 30 years. And this is not just a.
If that happens, you're going to have inflation, and you're going to have the cost of goods and services increasing. Therefore, your revenue from sales tax should increase tremendously.
You do have the automatic inverse, right, of.
Goods and services aren't going to.
They're not going to stay stagnant, so your revenues won't stay stagnant, and, and so I always kind of show that as a wash. We don't, we don't know if revenues are going to increase at the level of expenses, in a lot of entities they don't. You know, it just depends on what you do economically with the community for the next 30 years. I was going to state. I mean, this, this is it, other capital, how do we finance those needs? How do we afford the operational needs?
The more detailed version of this spreadsheet that we've been playing with is sloped. Based on scheduled annual revenue increase, is that correct?
We, we have assumed a 2% increase. Right now, you, your existing rate structure is set up to, after January of 19, each year thereafter to adjust by 2%, all your utility rates to go up by 2%.
Why is that one flat?
Why is, which part's flat?
The blue chunk that reflects the rates.
Well.
Is because this is assuming a flattened number instead of a.
This is a slightly different chart, Mr. Razzell. What we included here is, we want it in this area here. Oh, why is this not going up?
Why isn't that sloped?
It's a S. I didn't put 2% in there.
Oh, okay. So that number's really.
That, that will go up a little bit of slope, yeah.
I mean, the 2% here isn't nothing, it's not flat, it's not.
No, they're actually, this number here should have been times 2%, so you would actually see, but it's, good point.
Okay. I mean, that's an increase in over 30 years of some number of dollars. I'm not going to do public math. Yeah.
We had updated this chart. It's a little different than what you were seeing before. We updated that, and I apologize. I completely forgot to drop that 2% growth in this figure here. Even then, look.
Well, I know.
So that's, I'll be glad to answer any questions any of the, anyone has regards to this.
I have one last question. Are we insured by the institutions that we're borrowing this money from to fund this project?
Sure, I understood. Are you insured?
Yeah, I mean, say we can't meet the obligation. Is there any way we're insured or we totally liable?
You're totally.
We've compounded on the interest from which we borrow, will we lose that rate?
You're going to enter into a covenant in your loan agreement with the Water Resources Board that they're, they're going to look at your financial position every year. And if they look at, there's, there's, there's an actual debt coverage covenant.
Okay.
That your revenues, and that's part of, I actually didn't bring it tonight because it certainly got into a lot more detail in the finance area. But I provided to you kind of the five-year history, included in that five, where you see all the numbers, is a debt coverage ratio. And so the lenders will, they will actually impose a coverage ratio, a cushion that your revenues bring in, at least depending on the program, anywhere from 125% to 140% of what you need to make your debt service payments. You guys are there. And so, but if you have a dramatic downturn in revenues from one of those, from the, you know, one of those areas, then you're going to either reduce expenses or you're going to increase revenues. And you would increase, obviously, revenues are through your rate structure. They would come to you to say, how are you going to make this up? But they, they don't look at it, I mean, you're not going to get very far down the road. They're going to look each year, they're going to monitor and see what your debt, your auditor's going to have it. There's going to be a, an actual report in your audit financial statements that show how you're addressing that coverage. Pretty typical with water board, it's going to be typical with bonds you sell, it's going to be typical with banks you borrow from. They want that level of cushion. And the, and this coverage, when I state this, revenues divided by expenses, operating expenses. The water board only looks at that operational coverage. They don't, if you don't have a nickel for capital, they don't care for any other capital. They just want to make sure your revenues cover your expenses at a certain coverage level. And so it's a built-in mechanism to ensure that, you know, things are going south, that you make the necessary adjustments. And like I said, these are covenants that if you don't comply with that covenant, you have a technical default. And so, but that's, that's standard with all the loans that you've ever had with Water Resources Board.
Derwin, look at it like it's your own money that you're lending.
That's how I was looking at it. Is there a debt and forgiveness involved?
That's what you have to look at.
Well, sometimes they take a mortgage in, in the actual, I don't think that the Water Resources Board wants to own a $315 million project and operate, but.
John, one question that I've got. In most of the presentations that you've given, I've, I've heard that in order to, to pay this off the way we plan to, we need to sell more water, right?
Well, what we have to be is at the level of what you're selling water now and what you have for the last 12 months, you have to sell last 24 months.
Well, I, I know.
You have to sell at that level.
We've discussed, you know, water usage by some of our big customers.
Right.
And, and we want them to continue to use at least the amount of water they've been using.
Yes.
But what, why then are we rationing water to our residential customers?
That's not.
Let me address that one. I, I think you're referring to water conservation efforts.
Yeah.
Where several years ago, we went into phase one.
Right.
Which is the odd even watering. We've technically never come out of that. We don't really enforce that, at least certainly not aggressively. So I don't know that it's fair to say that we are rationing water. On, on one hand, we certainly always want to conserve water, it's a valuable resource. But you're very, you're very correct in that selling more water helps us finance not only this project, but other projects in the city.
Well, I mean, you know, the reason I brought that up is that, you know, the, the odd even thing, and, and I, you know, if I've turned all the water on the wrong day, I feel guilty, and I'm sure a lot of the residential customers do too. And I, I, you don't.
I don't water my lawn.
But anyway, you know, so I, I just thought, you know, to me, if, if we're, if we're wanting more water revenue, we shouldn't do anything to discourage our customers from, from using more water.
So over the time period we're looking at, the assumption is that we, we have more water to sell. Whereas currently, we have a less of a supply. I mean, the whole point of this is.
Right, I understand all that.
Yeah.
But apparently we have enough that we could sell more than we've been selling. I mean, yeah.
Maybe not so much in July and August.
Well, anyway, on, on down the line, then, we wouldn't have any restrictions.
Well.
Please water your lawn.
Quite frankly, I don't think the citizens at large, I have not heard anybody, I, I don't think the fact that we're technically still in phase one, I'm not sure that the public is aware of that. I think they're probably doing whatever they want to do.
I think they are. I mean, but, you know.
Well.
Just the ethical actors like Ron Chancy.
There you go.
It, it seems counterproductive on one hand to tell people to use all the water you want to. It's a difficult thing. You're right, we need to sell more water, but we also need to conserve the resource.
I understand. Okay.
So certainly, if people are out watering their lawns, we do not have people going around issuing tickets.
Nobody's going to show up and put the cuffs on them.
That's correct.
They're using their water, they're going to pay more.
Absolutely.
Okay, talk to us about the revenue portion, then. What are our assumptions in your graph?
The assumptions for revenues is that your residential, your commercial, and your industrial customers use the level of water that they've used on average over the last 12 months.
Okay.
And which is actually down slightly from the, from year, the two to three years prior to that. You're down a little bit on consumption, so we've taken the most conservative 12-month period for a majority of your customers as our base, so we're not relying on pie in the sky type of consumption numbers, so.
3 billion, 3 billion gallons a year.
Right.
Divided by 12. 50, 158. If you take 3 billion divided by 12, what's the answer?
250, 250 million a month.
250 million gallons a month.
I mean, million gallons, I said dollars, I think, gallons a month.
Okay, so what is our assumption that Coke's buying at that point, then?
That would be their last 12, actually, I think the last 12 months updating for May, they've, they have, they're averaging 3.35 million gallons. If you throw May in, we assumed 3.15 million gallons here. That was the, the 12-month running average for last month.
Okay.
We just recently, so that's assuming they would buy.
Of potable water.
Yes, of potable water purchase, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question.
Well, it's kind of the only question at this point. We know roughly what residences are going to buy. People aren't going to change that much one way or another.
3.1 million's what I'm tracking that's built into this specifically for our biggest industrial user, which is Coke. Visiting with them very closely over the last several weeks, really months, what they think they're going to get to at some point on potable water use is in more in the range of 1.5 to 2.5.
Okay.
That's what they believe they can achieve at some point. They have not achieved that up to this point, that's what John's telling you. Our model builds in a certain amount of revenue from our biggest industrial customer. I believe in, it's about $9 million out in 2021. At the high end of what they're saying that they would use in the. At the high end of what they're saying that they would use in the future, 25, let's say 2.5 million gallons per day, I think roughly in the model, it shows about, that generates a certain amount of 7.2 million or something. And that's, that's approximate, I'm going from memory. We believe that we may need to continue to visit with them and perhaps adjust our rates for our biggest industrial user. That may be something we need to contemplate. I will say in fairness, that's something that we may determine we need to do now. We may determine we need to do in five years from now or 10 years.
I'm not, I'm not voting for the next phase of this engineering until we have a better revenue picture.
Understand.
At 1.5 million gallons a day, we cannot build this unless we increase their rates or start charging for reuse water.
And that's why, that's why we'll be talking about potential water rate ordinance very soon, maybe even as soon as the next.
Then five years doesn't seem like a viable option.
What I'm saying is that at any time, whether we needed to raise them now or in the future, the City Commission has the ability to do that. I do think it may be prudent to at least study it and see what needs to be done now. I do know that, as John mentioned, we're going off of, we're going off the best assumptions and the information that we have now. Two years from now, they may completely change, it may cause us to have to adjust something else. Or, as we talked about, maybe we'll bring in some additional industrial users. Or maybe we'll, we'll get some help from the federal government. But I do believe that based on the model, we probably need to look at addressing maybe a tiered water rate structure. And we will be prepared to talk about that more on June the 5th. Because we, I think we all know, we need to, Koleak is the only long-term solution for the city's water issues. It's the best long-term solution. To get there, we need to satisfy that we can pay for it, not just the next phase, but all of it. And not just the finance project, projects, other capital needs. Because as you pointed out and other commissioners have pointed out, we cannot forego nothing, doing nothing, or next to nothing for the next 30 years, even for water. I believe $10 million is a reasonable level.
That 10 million includes the 60 million we're going to spend in the well field?
Yes.
So it's really 8 million for everything less the well field?
Potentially, yes. It does not include additional, it doesn't include probably about $2 million that's already factored in the model for sewer and sanitary sewer or stormwater based on. So, it would, it would look very much like our current budget proposal that you'll be talking about upstairs looks like. Where I think we have approximately 12.8 million in capital expenditures. And I think that includes stormwater and sewer, Aaron can clarify that for us upstairs. That's why I'm feeling pretty confident that $10 million is a reasonable or a minimum level that we need.
It feels a little bit like we've been tap dancing around this for months, that we know what the revenue picture's going to be. But that we need to, I mean, that we need to nail down what we're going to be actually generating from industrial users.
I wouldn't characterize it as tap dancing, I think we've been doing our research and I think that's the conclusion.
It's, it's not easy.
It's not easy.
No, but I'm like, you know, we, this isn't that hard to look at.
You can, you can gauge expenses, but you can never can come close with revenue.
No, I just mean, Mayor, that we, it's not real hard to look at the revenue we've generated from water sales and sales tax and then just project it out. And if we're being told that there's a big cut in that revenue coming, that projection changes dramatically. And we can't, we can't do it. I mean, that's the part where it feels a little bit like we have, I mean, the, the details of this and the financing structure and, and John's job, absolutely very complicated. The actual, where's the revenue coming from, isn't in that the big chunks of it are pretty clear-cut.
I think we're, actually, I think we're, we're pretty close. I think we're down to, we need to figure out what the tiered water rate structure needs to be. And I think we need to bring that to you for discussion and consideration. And then, I think you need to put in place whatever we need to put in place, and then I think we need to move forward. So, what I believe is going to happen is we're going to continue to work on that, vet that, bring that June the 5th and study session. And then probably ask for your consideration of approval on the 19th. On the 19th, I think we're also going to ask for your consideration of a resolution to move forward with the next loan package. So we can get that before OWRB in the August timeframe, which would drive getting started on phase three. And then at some point, whether it's then or after that, we're going to ask you to probably figure out which option you would like the engineers to pursue. At the presentation, I'll show you, if we have time tonight, we'll show, there's a recap of what you've seen already, I'll show you. There were six options originally, but we think two are the best. So, I think that's a prudent course, I think, I think we're not far away. But I think we may need to make an adjustment to the tiered water rate.
Will the tiered water rate be solely potable or will you bring back an ordinance that provides for a market rate for reuse water?
What I'm talking about right now is potable.
Okay, well, let's please provide a filler plank in the ordinance that we'll be discussing for a reuse water rate.
Okay.
Okay.
Reuse, gray water.
Yeah.
Gray water.
Yeah, reuse, gray, whatever. That a, I would like the ordinance that we bring back, we, we need to at least be able to talk about that in the ordinance. I don't want to have to come back in another session, so let's.
We will certainly bring it for discussion, as you know, in study sessions, we discuss things.
Sure.
We figure out what's.
I, I'd like to see the language while we discuss it, thank you.
And reuse water is water.
It is, it has value.
And it has value, you're exactly right.
All right, John, if you're done, we're going to get Chris up there to talk about engineering stuff.
Thank you.
And Michael.
Chris, don't worry about item four and five.
Okay.
I promise item four will take about 85 seconds.
Okay, basically what we're going to do is we're going to go over what we talked about last time. We rearranged the agenda, we talked about financials first.
Sorry, could you say that again?
Well, we rearranged the agenda, but we talked about financials first.
Too easy, too easy, man.
Michael. The commission. Now, you'll recall the, the phase two program goals were to prepare the 30% design, that's complete. To update the cost opinion from a capital cost and O N M standpoint, that is complete. And then to develop an executable plan, which is what we have been working on for the last.
My apologies, I couldn't hear what you said.
No worries. We've been working on for the last several months. We presented essentially six executable plans through discussions with city staff and presented all six of those to, to, to the commission as well. We have boiled those down to really two feasible or executable options. Primary difference in those are the, the size of the pipeline. Option four is a 30-inch pipeline and includes a booster pump station with a 10 and a half million gallon per day water treatment plant, which includes ozone and granular activated carbon. The program cost for that is $305 million. The initial program capacity is 10.5 million gallons per day with a growth, growth investment year of 2063, meaning that's the, that's the point at which your demand would dictate reinvestment from a capacity standpoint in that program, option four's program. Option six, a, a very similar scenario from a treatment standpoint, same capacity, same treatment plant, but a larger pipeline with more future capacity, no booster pump station in the initial phase. It comes in at a price tag of $315 million with an initial capacity of 10.2 million gallons per day and a, and a reinvestment or growth investment year of 2048. That's the year that you would need to add the booster pump station on the pipeline because your future demand, water demand would, would dictate that.
Michael, why does the gallons per day go down?
Because in the, in the 30-inch pipeline, we, we include the booster pump station to increase the velocities and get a little more flow through there. But it, it gets tapped out quicker beyond the program lifespan because it's a smaller pipe. When you look at these two options and just focus on the, the right-hand columns there, the last two, from a priority and sacrifices standpoint, option four's priority focuses on water quality and capacity. But it does sacrifice some, some pipeline capacity in the future because it's only 30-inch. And then option six focuses again on water quality and capacity. And then the, the sacrifices with it are solely based on it being more costly. Phase three and four schedule, just kind of a look ahead at, at what is next from an engineering standpoint. We have the original program schedule called for phase three to begin in July of this year. Land acquisition proceedings to, to also occur in parallel with that. Final design would pick up in October of this year. And then you can see the different construction packages that would be let in the fourth quarter of 2019, another big package in the first quarter of 2020, another big package in the second quarter of 2020, and the last one in the summer of 2020, with all those scheduled to, to be completed mid-year 2022.
And I believe I misspoke when you asked what segment eight was. I think it was actually on the other end of the pipeline.
Intake.
It's the part that comes right off the intake, segment eight. I told you incorrectly. This is our demand slide. You know, we've been talking about water in, in billion gallons rolling 12 months. This started out as an annual average, so that's kind of what we've stayed with because we like to maintain our baselines. You can see that, you know, back last year, 8.2 realm, we're, we were at 9.5 year-to-date last month. And then, like he was saying, we went down just a touch, 4 million gallons a day, which is going to be 3 billion or something, 3 billion gallons annually, if you project that over the year. And this, this is one of those things that we keep tracking, so we know where we're standing.
Speaking of demand projections, that, that slide stopped the projection at the year 2050. This carries it on out throughout the, well beyond the life of this program. And if we look at option six, I talked earlier about growth investment options. And I mentioned that the initial capacity was 9.2 M G D, million gallons per day. And that, that first growth investment would be in the year 2048. Well, Mayor, it's that booster pump station that's missing from option four to get you beyond that capacity of 9.2. The next growth investment would be approximately in the year 2053. And that's because the initial water treatment plant capacity would be tapped out at that point. And then subsequent investments would be in the year 2087. Again, another water treatment plant upgrade from a capacity standpoint, as well as some improvements at the intake and a, another intermediate booster pump station. And then finally, the full build-out capacity would be reached in the year 2136 at 21 million gallons per day. Now, this is all based on the current city demand, the green bar from the previous slide. Remember, the original program full build-out was based on the red bar that you see on this chart, which is the, the high demand scenario, the best case growth, from a growth standpoint scenario. And that's all we have tonight. Gerald, any questions for us?
Land acquisition?
Yes, sir.
You've, you've got 18 months in there. Michael, haven't you done this for some other cities, acquiring land?
Yes, sir, we have.
How realistic is that?
It's, it's very realistic, in some, in some cases, we.
That's not a negative question.
Yeah. But it, but it could potentially get negative at some point, you know, it's a very delicate situation. And, and property rights are important and the city recognizes the importance of those property rights. And so, we feel like it's, it's fairly conservative and, and realistic.
And you'll notice that we, we start with our, our land acquisition almost first thing out of the gate and in the next phase, before we start pipeline design.
Do you have to have all the land acquired before you start?
Before I start designing or construction?
Construction.
Yes. It, it doesn't make sense to do it any other way?
Sure. I think you're going to have a big gap in there.
Lots of buckets. Does that help? Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, Carol.
Yes, skateboards. Right now, we restrict persons from riding a skateboard on any public street or sidewalk within the downtown area. I was requested to remove this and present it as a possible change so that people could ride their skateboards on public streets and sidewalks in the downtown area.
This is my request, I, I, because I ride a skateboard and happened to pull up the ordinances and search skateboard, discovered for some absurd reason that I can't ride my skateboard through downtown, it being the only place in Enid. So, this seems like this must be a holdover from some bygone era where, you know, old folks yelled out kids and their skateboards off their lawn or something like that. It feels like we need to just fix this, in part because I'm also riding my skateboard downtown and hate to be a scofflaw.
Okay. So, that's that one. And if I don't get any comments, I'll put it on and you all can put on it next time.
I, I'm assuming that this was put into effect because they were concerned about pedestrians getting run down by people who have skateboards.
I, I guess.
And, and I don't, I don't, is that a real danger? I, I'll have to confess, I've never ridden a skateboard.
I'm more worried about the pedestrians than I think they are about me, but.
You're more, say that.
Does that include? I'm more concerned about the pedestrians and tripping over them and flying off my skateboard to avoid them than I think they are about me.
Which is a safety issue.
Yeah, I, yeah, for, for me on, on the dumb skateboard. I, I don't think it's any great issue, or certainly not any more so than a bicycle or a jogger or whatever.
But we don't, we don't let bicycles ride on the sidewalk, do we?
Well, this is on the streets.
You're talking about in the street?
Yeah.
You ride that thing in the street?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
I also sprained my ankle and hobbled around in a boot for a few weeks, so. You know, questionable judgment admitted, but still, my, my daughter likes it too, so there you go.
Okay, well.
Does that include like the electric skateboards and the motorized skateboards?
Yes. Okay.
I'd be curious to hear what E N P D has, their opinion would be on it.
We don't, we don't have any. That, this ordinance has been around for over 20 years. Usually it comes up when somebody complains, a business owner or something. I don't think it's that big a deal in this day and age. I think that particular law would probably put into effect when our downtown is more vibrant than it is now.
Never been more vibrant than it is now.
Well, I mean, it's, it's coming back up again, but I mean, I'm talking about back when we had Holm Irons and all those.
It's also still provided that, that there are, can still be posted areas which prohibit skateboard use. So if you, no skateboard, for instance, the gazebo on the courthouse lawn is posted, there's no rollerblading or skateboarding.
Yeah.
And so that would still retain, this just removes the small geographic restriction that's currently in place in the ordinance.
Do skateboarders ride helmets or helmets?
I do, yes, I don't want to die.
Just say that again.
I, I don't think the police, as the police problem, we won't have a problem with it. It's rarely enforced at this, at that moment. In 20 years that I've been here, I've, I don't think I've ever heard of anybody riding a skateboard. I mean, we have chased kids away at times when they get a little bit thick, but we don't really ride them.
What about adults?
Yeah, yeah. You can chase them away too, it's fine.
Looking at the dates of the ordinance, it probably when skateboards really got popular, it was a reaction perhaps to, to that. And maybe we've gotten, now that they've been popular for the last 20 years, maybe we've just gotten used to it. So it doesn't seem to be quite as threatening. And I thought the, I did check with the police chief and he didn't see a big problem with it either. Thank you. Okay, the next one was.
Segways?
Segways or the incredibly long definition, electric personal assistive mobility device, a segue. We don't have to have this ordinance, people could have the segways now because it's in state statute. But I was approached by, probably in jest, by the city manager who mentioned that he was thinking that we might, he might get one.
Carol, never redo your story.
Well, I just thought, you know.
Have you taken one of those segue tours through like New York or DC? Do you want to start a segue tour thing here? I support that. I think segue tours around downtown would be great.
And the thought.
Short, but.
You and Gerald are on the short.
And the thought was that it was probably a good. And the thought was that it was probably a good idea, as thick as the ordinance, as thick as the state law is, that if we were going to encourage the last mile of walkability that you talked to me about, that this would go hand in hand with the, with your skateboard idea. And actually, you can pretty much ride these, these electric personal assistive mobility devices almost anywhere other than a state highway or a state turnpike.
So this just, this mirrors the state statute?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Once again, we're talking about riding them in the street.
We are talking about, now this is interesting. We are talking about riding them in the street, on the walking trails, the bike ways, and the municipal street, streets of the city.
But not sidewalks as such.
Well, no, I'm sorry. State law specifically provides, and it could happen as soon as someone buys one of these things, that you do ride them on the sidewalk. They are allowed by state law right now, on the sidewalks, on the walking trails, on the bike ways. The idea is that this is a, just like a wheelchair kind of thing, a mobility.
I'm more concerned about one on ONK Garrett. We're not talking about one of these in the, on 412, are we?
State highways are.
State highways, no.
State highways are prohibited by state law.
Right. So this just codifies what state law provides and, you know, maybe, maybe the passing of the ordinance will encourage people to, to be more mobile.
That common sense.
Yes.
All roads down, common sense to me.
Why walk when you can ride?
Well, I'll tell you what, for folks who can't, who can't walk around quite as well, I think that's a nice, a good option.
Yeah.
I would love, my, my wife is, has rheumatoid arthritis and can't walk very far. She would love people to get on one of those and cruise around with kids.
They look like something that would take a little getting used to.
I expect there's a learning curve, just like the skateboard. Never too, never too late.
But the pathways is, it would be perfect for the pathway.
I'm in the home.
Yeah.
Put an eight-year on, on that, now master, 10 minutes. Put an 80-year on, it'd be 10 minutes.
Right, could use data.
Anything else?
Okay, I will put them on for the next agenda.
Thank you, Carol.
Our journey will be upstairs at 6:00.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high definition on channel 112. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enitv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enit.org.